Good evening and welcome to the August 28, 2018 City Council Special Meeting. And Mayor Debbie Burtland, and welcome back fellow council members and community. I think we've had approximately a month off, so I hope people have been able to tune out and refresh for a little bit. The first order of business is actually to have the city clerk call roll.
Thank you, Mayor Burtland. We'll start with Mayor Burtland.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Neese.
Present.
Councilmember Acker.
Here.
Councilmember Bassett.
Here.
Councilmember Weaker. Councilmember Wiesentiner.
Here.
And Councilmember Wong.
Great, thank you. So the next item of business is to approve the agenda. Council, can I have a motion as presented?
So moved.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I meant to say aye, apologies.
Okay, so motion passes and the agenda is approved. We have one item of special business this evening, AB 5466, which is Wash dot I 405, Renton to Bellevue Widening and Express Toll Lanes Project. And for that, we will have Senior Project Manager Kirsten Taylor kick it off.
So I would like to introduce, sorry for the last minute scramble, we are coming from one meeting to this meeting, so. And would you be interested in waiting for the city manager to arrive, or should we continue?
How long will it be?
I would say, I expect shortly.
Why don't we go ahead and get-
But just go ahead?
Why don't we go ahead and get started?
Okay, all right, thank you. So for the record, Kirsten Taylor, Senior Project Manager. And I would like to introduce the I 405 State Route 167 Program Administrator, Kim Henry from Wash Dot, who will be providing a briefing on this project to the council and to the community.
Thank you and welcome.
I really appreciate the opportunity to come and talk about 405. I'm just going to jump right into the presentation. If I can get this to work. Okay, thank you. So on Interstate 405, we have a master plan, and that master plan was adopted back in 2002. That was a result of an EIS that we had completed in the corridor. And as we were going through that process to develop this plan, we had a committee of elected officials and agency heads that really helped develop the plan, but that committee continues to be actively involved with the program today. We meet on about a quarterly basis. Because this is a multimodal and multi-agency program, we continue to track with all of our agency partners the progress that everybody is continuing to make up and down the corridor. And so so far, we're making pretty good progress, but we still have a long ways to go. These are the projects that are either completed or funded, and we're continuing to make progress with the different components as we work through those. One of the most important next steps that we've adopted as part of that master plan is a 40-mile system of express toll lanes. And that's incorporating the 167 hot lanes in with express toll lanes on 405. So the first ones to get started were the hot lanes. We've had those around now for quite a while. And then we opened the express toll lanes from downtown Bellevue all the way up to I-5 and in Linwood. But we had really a significant missing gap, and that was the section in orange up there on the map, and that was the section between Renton to Bellevue. And that is really one of our most congested freeway sections that we have in the state. So legislature did fund that project in 2015 with connecting Washington, and so we have been moving forward. That is actually divided up into three different construction phases. And the first phase of that project is already underway with interchange improvements at the 405 167 interchange. And this is a critical component in order to really connect the hot lanes into the 405 express toll lanes. That project right now today is moving ahead of schedule. We're really been happy with the progress we've been making, and so we're, we'll be finishing that up before 2019. The second and most significant part, then, of the construction phases that we have here with the program is the widening between the interchange down in Renton all the way up into downtown Bellevue and connecting those different projects together. This is a very large project. Our contract upset price on this is $710 million, so it really represents a fair amount of work. And in order to move forward with this, we have two different environmental documents. And one of them is the downtown Bellevue vicinity, so that's going from I-90 in through downtown. And then the second environmental document goes, stretches from I-5 in the Tuck Willa area all the way up to Interstate 90. The first one is now complete. We have that work already done, and we are nearing completion on the second document. There are certainly a number of different impacts that are part of these projects, but these impacts are all being mitigated, and so we're replacing wetlands and improving fish passage. And so all those types of things are being added in with this particular project. We continue to do coordination with our partners here in the corridor. We have Sound Transit that we continue to work with, King County on the regional trail system. And we also are working with the city of Bellevue and coordinating work on the Mountains to Sound Greenway Trail. Couple of important dates here, and just in terms of the progress of this project, we are already started in the procurement process. And so we have just kicked off here in August, the request for qualifications from contractors. Our RFP will go out in November, and then in August of 2019, we'll get started with the construction of the project. This map just shows where we have some different improvements going on through the corridor. And so what we're doing, adding one lane, the entire length of the section between Highway 167 and downtown Bellevue. That added lane will be coupled then with the HOV lane, and those two lanes together will create a dual express toll lane system. Up there on the map, you'll also see a couple of green sections, and so those are where we have some auxiliary lanes. So the first one there at the top of the map is from I-90 down through 112. I think that probably everybody who drives through that section recognizes the level of congestion that we have there getting through the Coal Creek interchange. And so we have an added lane that will take us all the way down to 112th interchange, giving the added capacity that's needed to help smooth those merges out and reduce that congestion through there. And then we also have one between 44th and 30th for the Kenny Dale Hill area. This shows some details of what's going on between downtown Bellevue and I-90. One of the problems that we have today is there's so much traffic that is going from Bellevue to Issaquah area that we have standing traffic actually stuck in the middle of the freeway, which then really influences the traffic that's trying to go west on I-90, so traffic trying to go towards Mercer Island, but also it really impacts the through traffic. As part of this project, we're going to be creating a dual lane off-ramp that goes towards Issaquah in that direction. Getting that traffic moving is going to really help free up the flow of traffic through that entire section. These congestion contours then show what it really looks like in terms of traffic congestion that we have out there. And so with these, we have sets that show both northbound and southbound direction of travel for both the HOV and the regular lanes of travel, both with and without the project in 2025. So with these, they're color-coded to show what it looks like based on the level of congestion. So black is the very worst color. That's just stop-and-go traffic that doesn't move. Red is heavy, heavy congestion. And then on the other end of the scale, we have green that is free-flow conditions. So for this, we're showing the morning traffic projections, and along the bottom, we have times that stretch between 5:00 a.m. and 10:30 a.m. And then the vertical axis here shows where you are in the corridor. And so at the bottom of each of these graphs, it has I-5, so that's I-5 at Tuck Willa, and then at the top, it's 520 in downtown Bellevue. So you can see where you are at any particular point in the corridor. When we're talking about the morning traffic, really the primary traffic flow direction is northbound. And so if we look at the left-hand side of the chart here, where we have the northbound traffic flow, we have both the HOV lane and the general-purpose lanes that are congested throughout the entire morning, all the way up through the 44th interchange in north end of Renton. And then you get a little bit of a break in travel patterns, and as you hit I-90 downtown Bellevue area, you see we get congestion again. So then, as we look at what happens with the project, if you go to the very far-right side of the page, all of the traffic congestion that we have between Tuck Willa and north end of Renton really disappears. We still have a little bit of congestion through I-90 and downtown Bellevue, but we also still have projects as part of our master plan that we will be coming back with and adding more capacity to address some of these problems. So this is an important next phase, but it doesn't really address all of our problems in the corridor yet. This is the same information for the PM peak, and the predominant flow is in the southbound direction. And so getting out of downtown Bellevue in the afternoon, getting through I-90 area and south of there is really the big challenge, just heavy, heavy congestion that goes on all afternoon and through the early evening hours. Then, as we look over at the other side of the page, we see in the southbound direction with the project that we really have cleared up all of that congestion. And so all those improvements we're making coming out of downtown Bellevue and around the I-90 interchange are really making a very substantial difference in the overall traffic flow. One of the problems you'll see, though, as you look all the way at the bottom of that chart, is we do now have new congestion that's happening at the Tuck Willa I-5 interchange area. And that's because we've really opened up the bottleneck. We've got more traffic flowing down to that area, and that is creating additional backup there. So we have, once again, more projects on the master plan list that will come back and address those particular problem areas, but this project does not yet address that. We're also working with our partners at King County for the regional trail on the Eastside Rail Corridor. We're building about two and a half miles of that trail for King County, and we'll be connecting up from about where the Seahawk facility is all the way up to the Coal Creek area, as well as a new crossing where the old Wilberton Tunnel used to be for bike and pedestrians. We're also working closely with-
Is that picture you just showed us where the old bridge used to be, and you're putting it back in?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We're also working with our partners at Sound Transit as part of their implementation of Bus Rapid Transit to include inline transit station. This is a transit station at 44th. So the ramp comes up out of the middle of the express toll lanes and into then a center transit stop, where they are then able to get right back onto the freeway again as they go through. This interchange design also utilizes a lot of roundabouts here, which keeps traffic flowing. And the traffic that you're seeing in this particular video here is 2045 traffic. And if you've traveled out there in the mornings at all, you've seen that this area is extremely congested today, and with the improvements on the freeway, we've got fewer people wanting to bypass on arterials. They instead are getting on the freeway where they would normally get on. And then also with the roundabouts, it moves better through the freeway.
Excuse me, could you just, going back to that for a moment?
Sure.
Help us understand what, where a bus would actually go?
So you're seeing a-
Maybe if you've got a laser pointer there, you might, I guess we actually see a bus there, don't we?
There's a bus right there. So that's the bus stop. And right across from that right there is the northbound direction. So we are looking north through this, from this angle right here, and you can see the express toll lanes are on the median side. We have congestion in the right-hand lanes, the regular lanes. That roundabout in the top of the page right there is where the access from the new on-ramp, northbound on-ramp is going.
Okay, so the bus never left the overpass, though. It came up the off-ramp, went to just around two legs of the roundabout, and then right back onto the freeway there.
Correct, so it comes right across, doesn't really leave the freeway. It drops passengers right there. And then in the, if I can, I'll go back just a second here, in this quadrant right here, Sound Transit is looking to construct a new park-and-ride lot. So there will be then fairly easy access back and forth from the transit stop, from the park-and-ride.
Thank you very much.
So Renton to Bellevue project really consists of three different construction phases, as I'd mentioned earlier, and those are the top three lines on this schedule. The first one being the interchange improvements that are underway today. The second one down is the Renton to Bellevue Widening Project. The third contract is really work that's going on off the freeway, and so it doesn't really influence as much some of the activities that need to be done, and so that's the third phase. As you can see, we have a box up there for early completion in 2020 for the King County Trail. We've worked with King County and the bike community to try and get that done very early on in the project. Then at 2024, we have a vertical dashed line, and that line is when Sound Transit plans to have their Bus Rapid Transit in operation in the corridor. And so we're trying to get all of our projects complete by that timeframe, so we have the infrastructure in place to allow the Bus Rapid Transit to operate in the corridor. And then that's really it, and I can take any questions if you have any.
Thank you, and I think that was helpful. Counsel, Bruce.
Well, I'm going to ask a question that I think is answered by the heat maps that you've provided, but I'll ask it for the benefit of putting it out there, because at least one citizen in something I saw posted had expressed it. And that is, in looking at this Renton to Bellevue, north of I-90 page, the trend, the change that's proposed there, there was an expression of frustration that somehow Mercer Island residents would be short-changed by this change in the roadway configuration. What I see is that we clearly are losing the HOV lane over at the right side of the road, extended all the way from the Southeast 8th ramp. I think it's Southeast 8th up and into the I-90 transition. But from the look of your heat map, I'm guessing you would say that's not much of a loss, because what we do is go from a situation where a lot of, there's a lot of backup for everybody to one where there's much less. But I'll let you tell me what you'd say about that.
No, yeah, that's exactly correct. And so there's been some lane reassignment, and we do have that right-hand HOV lane that extends between Southeast 8th and I-90. But the volume of traffic that uses that is really very, very small. And so by getting the reassignment of the lanes through there, and we still have the connections into the I-90, so we still have, at the interchange, we have the HOV connections, and we still have the GP connections. But by getting all the traffic flowing through the interchange area, it's really going to be much better for everybody. And so that entire section and area has really turned into a free-flow travel trip, which I think is a benefit for everybody.
Thank you.
Tom?
I actually can't take credit for this question. One of our local activists called me up, and there was a gal named Sarah Fletcher that you probably know and does a lot of research.
She's been in contact with us, yes.
Yeah, one of the concerns that she had brought up is that the buses now appear to have to cross over four lanes to get to the HOV lane to get to I-90. Is that, it looks like that is true according to this map.
So, yeah, we do have some, let's see if I go back to here. And so we do have an extra lane at the interchange to go across there. But we've also, as we've implemented this in the north end, we've gotten, I think, some pretty good hands-on experience with the operations and some good lessons learned about access and distances between interchanges. What we're finding is that we did need to go in and make some adjustments in a few different places, and we've taken that knowledge gained and applied it to this project. And so at this particular location, our access between where you can transition out of the express toll lanes and move over to the ramps is getting close to a mile in overall length. So it stretches from about Southeast 8th, where the on-ramp connects in, all the way down towards the I-90 interchange, which is actually more room for merging across lanes than we have in most places in the corridor. So it's not what I would consider a difficult, challenging weave movement from one end to the other, but it's something that we do pay attention to.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if, it definitely is going to free up the HOV lanes, people are going to move faster, but when you have large vehicles crossing four lanes to get to an exit, it doesn't, on the map, I wouldn't have thought that merge over is a mile long to I-90 westbound, that top upper right-hand lane. And then also, the exit portals, when you went live with the hot lanes on northbound 405, I drive from Renton to Everett twice a day. I remember that the gaps that you could get out of those lanes were very small, so you had to basically look for them and then jettison yourself across all four lanes to get to Totum Lake or Kirkland or whatever it was. Are those gaps going to be longer for people to ingress and egress out of those lanes?
Yeah, this project's going to be a lot different than that project was, in that we are adding capacity the entire length of the corridor, which the first project, the Bellevue to Linwood, we did not add that many lane miles of capacity. And so we ended up with some congestion points in the general-purpose lanes, the regular lanes, which made it harder then to merge in or out because of that congestion. With the capacity, the entire length of the freeway here, that's going to change that. And so as you, one of the things we were really paying attention to is where were the choke points going to be occurring this time around, and then what could we do to mitigate those particular problems? So it's going to be, look and feel a lot different. I think because we had been getting some questions about what that looks like, I think I included maybe a little more detail here, and this might be kind of hard to see, so I didn't want to really use it unless there was some thoughts about that. But you can see on the map on the right-hand side there where the purple lanes are is what the new design is going to be looking like. And you see where the arrows are at the bottom there. That's where the Southeast 8th on-ramp comes on, and at that point is where the double white lines will end, and it's just open then for merging all the way across. So there's then that time to make a couple of lane, different lane changes and get into the off-ramp flow of traffic.
Okay, I've got a question. Again, going back to the heat map and looking at northbound 405, I-90 north. Well, let's start with morning. When you look at the, without the project and the with project, I mean, I can't tell from a numeric perspective whether there's more or less congestion. Let's, you know, for conversation's sake, say that it's roughly the same. So in that stretch between I-92 Northeast 8th or that 520 interchange, there's not much of a delta either way.
Not much change.
You did reference, however, that you were, that there were additional projects that were adding capacity there.
Yes.
Because that clearly is a painful point for us now. I'm sure it will only be more painful as more people move to the region. Can you outline for us what some of those additional projects would be and the timelines that might actually bring hopefully some of that red to more of a yellow or a green?
Sure. As part of our master plan, we still have a lot of redesign work and reconstruction to do on the I-90 405 interchange area. And as part of that design, we have direct access ramps, some of the one we were just building down at 405 167 today, that would take traffic from the inside of I-90, from the HOV lane, into the center of 405, into the express toll lanes. And so as a, I would say probably a medium priority project on our list of projects, we had identified two of those projects that needed to move forward. And so we had been talking with the legislature about that for several years, and unfortunately, they haven't been funded yet, so I can't really project when that will happen. But they continue to remain on our priority list for the medium-range set of priorities here. So we would like to see those move forward in the not-too-distant future.
Kirsten, it would be terrific if we could find out more about those projects so that we can raise that even when we have conversations with our delegates to both the House and the Senate. Because if there's projects that need a little bit of encouragement and/or additional funding, it would be good for us to know.
We keep a- We keep a map, so Representative Cliburn has encouraged us to put together an informational map that she's been able to use with the legislature, and so we try to keep that up to date. We're always happy to share that if there's an interest in that, of both funded projects, projects under construction, and then the next priority projects in the program.
That would be super. Thank you. Saleem?
So just a quick question on the heat maps. Can you tell me, the with project versus without project, are the levels and volumes of traffic the same, or is it 2025 traffic with the project versus today's infrastructure with today's traffic?
So there are slight changes in traffic volume that occur with and without the project. And so as we look at 2025, there is increased traffic from today. But one of the things that happens around the region is that our area freeways, our area arterials are already mostly operating at capacity. And so when we build this project, we're not necessarily going to see a ton of additional traffic getting through some of those freeways and arterials that are already operating at capacity. And so there will be some increases, but they aren't going to be huge amounts of increase in overall travel.
So you're using basically the number of trips that exist today on today's infrastructure versus 2025 infrastructure?
No, there'll be 2025 trips, so there is an increase, yeah.
That's what the heat map represents.
Yeah, it represents 2025 traffic. This is just 2025 as we're doing our analysis. We also look at 2045 traffic. So we are looking at traffic near term and longer term as well, so that we are planning for the future.
Thanks.
Tom, did you have another question?
Yes. On the volumes of, volume of cars is one thing, but volume of buses, with these improvements, do you anticipate there will be more buses that will be diverted to Mercer Island?
So we would need to, I think, probably bring the transit agencies in on this conversation, but my understanding and working with Sound Transit is that with the opening of the light rail, there will probably be fewer buses making that movement in the future than what there are today. I think that they're trying to bring all of the bus rapid transit into downtown Bellevue to the transit center as then a potential transfer point for people to go then, whatever different direction they want to go to from there.
Do you, I guess, Kirsten, this is maybe a question for you. What I'd like to see is how many buses are projected to be coming to Mercer Island in the future, and an update on the, what was formerly going to be called the bus intercept? Because if less buses are coming into the city, maybe less cars will be coming into the city, and then there's the whole parking element, too. So at some point, just get an update on that.
Just reiterating that the whole bus intercept scheme, including the volumes of buses, all operational parameters, are part of the Sound Transit agreement.
Yep.
And a function of conversation between Metro Sound Transit and the city. So any change there from what is actually in the agreement today would obviously involve a tremendous amount of discussion and analysis. So I would encourage us to start with what that Sound Transit agreement says.
Yep.
Yep.
And then if we could get an update, that'd be great. I just assumed you were working with Sound Transit on some of that and just had some preliminary data, but thank you.
All right.
Yeah, most of our focus has been on supporting the north-south trips up and down 405 and the transit stations they needed on 405. So I'm less familiar with the bus issues coming this direction.
Counsel, any further questions? Well, thank you. I think it was very helpful, some good questions asked. I'm sure we'll be looking forward to some updates in the coming months and years.
Well, thank you very much for having me, and if there are questions, we're always happy to find some answers for those.
Super.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. So that concludes our special business for this evening. Next on the agenda, we have the City Manager's Report. Welcome, City Manager Julie Underwood.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Just thank you. The clicker. So welcome back. You had a good month off. Now we're going to have a busy, busy fall. Let me remind you, we just launched the city's new online community engagement platform called Let's Talk Mercer Island. This custom website will make it easier for residents and business owners to engage with the city on major issues at a time and place that's convenient for our residents. Let's Talk features interactive tools, including discussion forums, polls, surveys, and crowdsourced mapping. The city will use the online feedback in conjunction, of course, with our typical activities such as face-to-face meetings, hearings, and other surveys. So please visit letstalk.mersorgov.org and sign up and get started and start asking us questions and engaging in thoughtful conversation. The city is proposing amendments to the comprehensive plan, and we want your feedback. So proposed for 2018 con-plan amendments include policy discussions related to the J, critical areas protections, transportation, level of service, arts and culture policies, and many others. You can provide, you can see a list, of course, on the city's website, and we are already seeing lots of great feedback, of course, on the Let's Talk platform as well. Really excited. This month, we were featured in the Association of Washington City's City Vision magazine, and really it was around the city's effort to really plan for the workforce of today and tomorrow. Featured in the magazine is myself, Jason, Mike, Chris, give a shout out, they're back there. So please take a moment to read it. I think it's a great article and really highlights some of the really nice things that Mercer Island has been doing before me and since I've come here. Mepa's annual summer concert will be this Thursday, August 30th, at 6:00 PM at Mercer Dell Park. The Mercer Island Preschool Association is hosting their annual summer concert and will feature Casper Baby Pants as this year's musical guest. The concert is a free family event geared towards pre-school-age kids. Maybe Elliot would like to go. Bring your friends and extended family, and bring a picnic blanket and your dancing shoes. Want to call your attention to the Rainier Freeway Station changes. It will close September 22nd and not reopen again until 2023. We do have a number of bus routes that are going to be affected. Buses 550, the 554, and 216. So both the 550 and 216 will now bypass Rainier Avenue and continue to Seattle by the I-90 mainland. So Route 550 will access downtown via the transit tunnel, and Route 216 will access downtown via Fourth Avenue South. Route 554 will now stop at Rainier Avenue South and South Charles Street, and the 554 will continue downtown via South Dearborn Street. So if you'd like to check out the details of this, please visit soundtransit.org. CERT classes are starting September 5th, and for those of you who don't know, CERT stands for Community Emergency Response Team. CERT classes are designed to teach citizens to be better prepared to respond to and cope after a natural disaster or man-made disaster. At the end of the seven-week course, a CERT will have training in fire safety, disaster, medical, search and rescue, communications, and more. CERT classes take place Wednesday evenings from 6:30 to 9:30 here at City Hall in the Emergency Operations Center. If you'd like to register, please contact Officer Jennifer Franklin. Also on Friday, that's next Friday, September 7th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, the city will conduct its annual earthquake exercise. The purpose of this exercise is to test the ability of our city staff, volunteers, and partners to respond and recover from a 9.0 subduction earthquake. The drill will take place at two locations, here at the Emergency Operations Center and at our emergency shelter at the community center. So note, this exercise is really only for city emergency staff and volunteers and should not disrupt any daily life for our residents. The Chamber is hosting its fifth annual Art Uncorked event next Friday, September 7th. Enjoy an evening of wine tasting, art, and music, as well as food, at the Outdoor Sculpture Gallery. This year's event features 22 Washington wineries, breweries, and cider makers. Percentage of the proceeds will benefit the Mercer Island Youth and Family Services, as well as the high school's DECA program. You can visit Mercer Island Art Uncorked to purchase tickets. And of course, guests must be 25, 21 or older, and minors and strollers are the only minors allowed in. Back to School happens next Wednesday, September 5th, so remember to watch out for kids walking or biking to and from school. You'll probably see our officers out there, making sure you are obeying the speed limit through those school zones. In observance of Labor Day, city facilities will be closed on Monday, September 3rd. This also includes the community center, so there'll be no programs and no rentals then. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, the next item of business is appearances, and this is the opportunity for anyone to speak to the City Council on any item. When it's your turn to address the council, please be sure to speak audibly into the podium microphone, state your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three Ready to go. Welcome.
Good evening, and thanks for the opportunity to address you again. My name is Jim Schwab, and I'm the president of the HOA for 7800 Plaza Building, which is the building that adjoins the Tully site that we're going to be, that we've been talking about now for a number of months. I must, I just wanted to, I worry a little bit about this building in the sense that it feels a little bit like we're an orphan. We're the only condo project downtown. We're 24 units of residences and three commercial units, and we kind of sit off to the side a little bit. And when I appeared the last time, I wanted to encourage you to include us in the planning process as you move forward with the acquisition of this site. And I was a little disturbed that I thought the project got ahead of us before we'd been invited to participate. I think that's been corrected, and we in fact have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow so we can, I think, catch up, even though it seems like a lot of activity has gone on without our input, which always gives rise to concerns, and we always want to think the worst in terms of how the project gets designed. And I'm sure we'll get through that, but that was one of the things that I wanted to mention, and also wanted to say that I think we've gotten that corrected. The other thing that I think is maybe more important is that, in my role as a representative of the building, there are at least 25% of the units that would be, I think, severely impacted by a total buildout of the site. If you were to rezone it as proposed and build five-story projects, it'll cut off sightlines and light that'll affect units that face the north side of the building in particular. And so we, you know, even within the building, we have different interests and different concerns, but we want to present one common face for the whole project. We met last night as a group, and we're, we want to work in every way that we can. We're all Mercer Island people, we're all taxpayers, we're all supportive of progress here in the community. And I think there actually is a pretty strong sentiment within the group to be supportive of the MICA project. If that should end up somehow integrated into that site, we have a number of folks who feel really strongly about that, that location as a favorable site for that project. So thanks again for the opportunity, thanks for your service, and we look forward to working with Julie and Kirsten tomorrow and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Anyone else for public appearances?
Hey, Brian Hildebrandt, 6880 West Mercer Way. I actually came here like three weeks ago. I wanted to see the RFP, like, I believe the council was going to review that at that time. I think that must have been rescheduled. So I think I'm going to go back and look at the, look at the videos, but I hope that the RFP hasn't been already submitted, and, okay, that's great. Yeah. Yeah, and I just wanted to, you know, remind the council that that was, that was really important. I think parking is actually, it's okay right now, but I am very worried about what's going to happen when people go back to school, and I think there's going to be a big, big increase. So we'll see. But yeah, just, just wondering what happened with that, and it seems like, it seems like the council's on it.
Just so you're aware, that's on our agenda for...
Yeah, Bruce, thank you. Yes, it is, it's on the agenda, it's the first AP. So if you want to stick around, that would be terrific. Thank you.
But he asked if there was an RFP, this is an RFQ.
It's an RFQ, and it's a...
It's a little different.
So when we stick around, we're talking about the RFQ for the Tully's and beyond site.
Just, to complete the thought, if a citizen did have comment that they wanted the council to consider in its deliberations tonight, now would be the, presumably the last opportunity for a citizen to do that. And so for Mr. Hildebrandt, I just wanted to make that clear, this is your chance if you wanted to give us comment on that.
Well, that's, can I encourage you to come back down, and then maybe we can set the three minutes again? Paul, would you...
And my apologies for breaking things up a little bit there, but I did think it was confusion.
But I think this isn't the last chance. Tonight, we're asking for RFQ.
Can we, just let's pause. I would prefer, actually, Julie, would you like to summarize actually what is on the agenda for this evening with regard to the site?
Happy to, Mayor Bertin. We're reviewing for the second time, the second draft for the RFQ. We're hoping the council will finalize that this evening, and then we can get it out to potential developers by the end of the week, and hopefully we'll have about a five, six-week process to drum up interest. And of course, our primary interest in that property is parking. Yeah.
Okay, so we are in the public appearances section of the meeting. Would you like to share some thoughts, concerns, opportunities?
Yeah, I apologize for making a mess of procedure.
Not at all.
I'd just like to remind the council that a parking solution that kicks residents out of parking at certain times, or makes it, you know, makes it difficult for them, like basically time constraints parking is, that's not an acceptable mixed-use solution. That's my only concern at this point.
Great, thank you. Welcome.
Howdy, all. Paul Schumaker, 4546 Forest, and part of the MICA team. So a couple of thoughts. One, with my citizen hat on, when we get to the RFQ, I just want to reinforce that I think for me, my friends, my neighbors, I have no doubt that parking is a number-one priority. I assume we got to solve that. It's great, you listen to the community, you listen to people like me and my neighbors, so please do solve that. Adding on to it, my MICA hat on, we finished our public input process on August 20th. To keep up with your timeline, we did a little bit of a quick scramble in our process to be able to enable us to write the letter we wrote to you on August 23rd, which said to you guys that we firmly, strongly want to be a part of the mixed-use development at Tully's. We're going to put a whole lot more time and effort in the next couple of weeks into rolling all that together. We will share more of that with you on September 17th or 18th, or a date to be determined. And there'll be a full report, and I would actually say not, just as importantly, if not more important than sharing with you, we're going to share with the whole community. We'll tell them what they told us, what we think we heard from them. That's what we spent the last three months doing. One example, we asked the community what... what do you think the benefit of a central location for the arts would be? And 71% said they strongly agree or agree with that statement, and 17% said they strongly disagree or disagree with that statement. So 71 to 17%. So we'll present a lot more of that when we get together with you guys for a study session. As we said in the letter, we would ask you and your considerations to put more weighting on the arts and culture spaces part of your evaluation. And overall, it seems like such an awesome opportunity to not only meet goal number one, which is to provide parking, but to add on a significant community benefit and involve a private developer and leverage your Sound Transit dollars and leverage the dollars from a private developer. So the three parts of that potential mixed use seem like a real potential home run for the community, and we want to be a part of it. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm John Conrad. I live at 9320 Southeast 36th Street. I'd like to thank the city staff for the difficult work they did in finding the $1.23 million in service cuts and the $1 million from contingency funds necessary to balance the 2019-2020 budget if Proposition 1 fails to pass in November. It's sad to see a concrete plan for the dismantling of our city. The outcome was broadly predicted when Initiative 747 was on the ballot in 2007. The citizens of Mercer Island chose to reject 747, but ultimately, the state legislature enacted it. Limiting city revenue growth from property taxes to 1% with no adjustments for inflation will eventually require all Washington cities to seek a levy lift or face cuts like the ones we've, we will see tonight. I'm very sad to see that we will be forced to drastically reduce the geriatric services provided by YFS. Our seniors love the YFS staff and the services they provide. The cuts to fire and police will be felt by everyone. My wife and I could have relocated anywhere in the Puget Sound area as we moved here six years ago. We chose Mercer Island because YFS made it the best place to raise our kids. If Prop 1 fails and we lose two elementary school YFS counselors, the island will suffer. The YFS counselors are preventing problems and making our kids better members of their schools. Stretching the existing counselors across schools will make it nearly impossible for the counselors to schedule meetings with parents, and our children will pay the price. For me, Prop 1 will increase my property taxes about a dollar a day. Seeing what you as city counselors will have to do if Prop 1 fails, I am truly saddened. I do not understand how anyone can stand in opposition to this proposition. Seeing members of this community post signs calling for the dismantling of the city really shocks me. The levy lift will increase my property taxes by less than 3%.
I'm gonna pause just a moment. City Attorney, are we in a good place?
I think this is very borderline on campaigning.
So City Attorney, I'd look for your guidance in terms of whether it should continue or not?
I'd just like to ask the speaker to please not be advocating or taking any position with regard to the Prop 1 ballot measure. Thank you.
So, you know, looking at what you're gonna be reviewing in the budget tonight, I know it must be really painful. I know you, you live on the island, and I want to say that I appreciate the, the hard work that's gone into trying to figure out a solution to the problem. And that's it.
Thank you. Do we have any more public appearances? If folks could line up, that would be super helpful.
My name is Sarah. I live on 84th Avenue Southeast. I had the opportunity to observe two of the three CAG meetings and two of the open houses held for citizens. The city manager and director of finance led presentations on the city's financial condition. What struck me was the use of the statements. We are a lean organization, and finding efficiencies is in our DNA. Typically, when people make these statements, they also boast of their savings and enhanced metrics. For example, they'll say, "We reduce the amount of time it takes to process a permit request from a 30-day average to a 21-day average, saving $250,000 in labor costs." The statements that we hear here on Mercer Island are that our auditors, including consultants and the Washington State auditors, commenting that they can't provide an assessment because there are no documented procedures, tracking mechanisms, or measures in place. Lean organizations talk about delivering value to their customers from the customer perspective, eliminating waste from process and respecting the people doing the work and continuously improving what the organization does. Employees can identify waste in their processes quite readily. Talk to your employees. An indicator for one of the things of waste, skills, may be that we're spending $3.5 million in consulting and other professional services. An example of overproduction may be scheduling classes at the Mercer Island Community and Event Center that no one attends. Examples of waiting are planning a job to remove debris in storm drains with two trucks and four men. You have one idle truck and three men twiddling their thumbs. An example of inventory is the project at Groveland Park and the roadwork on 40th. Start your projects, finish your projects. Another option that the finance director and I discussed was the voice of the customer. You got a smattering of what that meant for the Mercer Island Biannual Survey and with attendance at meetings like this. What the residents of Mercer Island are telling you is that over the last three surveys, their satisfaction with your services are deteriorating. This tells you that the 22.5 FTE employees who have been added since 2011 are not, A, providing the services that your customers value, and B, throwing people at the problem is not achieving the results you want. I recommend that the city focuses on essential city for services, primarily safety and infrastructure. When I hear the proposed cuts, the visual that I'm left with is that of a wolf pack. The city intends to prey on the elderly and children and inflict pain on families. The city budget is about prioritizing safety, of which fire, police, and mental health are part of, and infrastructure. We know that you're proposing a $30 million levy for sewer and water, essentially doubling the existing city tax rate in a year or two. The conclusions that can be drawn with this city proposal is that you are either trying to incite fear amongst residents or you're grossly negligent. Neither option is compelling.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, council. I'm Sharon Perez of 3404 79th Avenue Southeast. And I would like to tell you a little bit more about what we heard listening to the community in the last three months. I am an islander, a mom, a volunteer, and part of Team MICA. And I want to say that we talked to residents, neighbors, people involved in the community who are very excited about the quality of life on our island. And they're engaged, and they're excited, and looking forward to having a multi-generational gathering place to experience and enjoy our community around the arts. And I think that this is related to everything we're doing right now because it's all about investing in our community. And it was very encouraging to see how many people came to participate in all of the listening sessions because they care so much about our community and its future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public appearances? Seeing none, appearances are now closed. The next item of business is the consent calendar, which contains payables, payroll, and AB 5465, the Lincoln Landing Stormwater and Park Improvement Project Appropriation Request. Is there a motion to approve? It's been first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, consent calendar is approved.
Excuse me, Mayor, could I get the first and second on that?
I believe it was Bruce and Selena.
Thank you.
So we now move to regular business, and the first item is AB 5459, finalize the RFQ for Transit Commuter Parking and Public-Privet Mixed Use Development Project on the Tully's Parcel 12 site. Welcome, city manager Julie Underwood.
If I could ask Bob Stowe, our consultant on this project, to please join me. I'm excited to bring before you a second draft for the request for qualifications for us to hopefully partner with a very well-qualified developer to build a transit commuter parking and mixed-use development on the Tully's and Parcel 12 site. As you know, the problem we're solving is to, to provide more commuter parking for our residents, especially when the Light Rail station opens in 2023. In our recent citizen survey, clearly, our residents have noted they are not satisfied with the availability of commuter parking, and they identified commuter parking as their top transportation priority. You might recall, in early June, you approved the purchase and sale agreement with the Tully's property owners, and we are embarking on that due diligence period now. And you reviewed the draft RFQ back on July 17th. Again, why are we wanting to proceed with an RFQ process now? We really believe our residents want to know what's going to be on that site beyond commuter parking, so we think engaging a qualified partner can help us in that process. We also want to understand what are the full costs for the project. Again, bringing in a qualified developer will help us with that. They can also better inform the due diligence process. And of course, we believe while 2023 seems like so far in the future, it's going to be here before we know it, and we really want to get going on this important project. Again, want to remind you, this is the site location, and in the center of the I-90 corridor there is the Light Rail. So it is a great spot for a mixed-use transit commuter parking. Recall that you have settlement funds to go towards this project. The settlement agreement provided over $10 million. 4.4 of that is for commuter parking. Recall that Sound Transit will provide 49%. The city has to fund the 51%. Why is that important? Because that allows us to create a model whereby residents can get a preferential access to this parking. And then, well, how's the city gonna fund their 51%? Well, we believe leveraging that land can provide the capital needed to construct the parking. So our goal is to find a well-qualified partner that would construct the underground parking, and in exchange, provide the air rights for them to develop, of course, according to the Town Center Code. And we envision perhaps some type of condo arrangement, but no matter what, that the city would really retain ownership of the parking. Yes, sir.
We would retain ownership of the 100 or more commuter spaces, not the totality of the parking if they built 300.
I'm sorry, that's correct.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. And so we believe by assembling the Tully's parcel and the city's parcel 12, we can provide over 35,000 square feet of development potential, and again, right next to our future Light Rail station. As you know, during the due diligence process, we are going through a comprehensive plan amendment and rezone for parcel 12. Again, without that, there is no ability really for us to leverage and provide a mixed-use project. While, while parcel 12 would allow us to build parking, it would limit us to parking. So that is going through, and I believe, as I noted in the city manager's report, that is on the planning commission agenda for tomorrow evening. All right, I'm gonna ask Bob to step in and talk a little bit more about public-private partnership benefits.
Thank you, Julie. Good evening, Mayor and council, great to be with you again tonight. As the city manager had mentioned, there are some great benefits associated with this public-private partnership. None the least, or not the least of which is, is the potential to obtain 100 or more public parking spaces for Mercer Island use. This site that we're looking at is within very close proximity to your proposed Light Rail station, within 500 feet. It's one of two sites that have been identified that could accommodate commuter parking for Light Rail use. And of course, the objective is to obtain public parking for the least possible cost for your taxpayers. There are two components within the RFQ, of which we will be evaluating those who, who respond to the city's request. Those include the team qualifications and experience, things such as the experience of all the team members, their relevant experience related to public-private partnerships, their financial capability to perform the tasks that we're asking them to demonstrate. That is weighted at 60%. The remaining percentage of evaluation criteria will be based on the project vision and the preliminary concept and proposal. We want to understand the developer's approach, the types of uses that are being proposed on the site, whether that's retail, residential, parking, or other uses. We'll want to include a number of, or we, RFQ does include a number of, of community preferences that we've identified we want to see on the site. Those include community benefits, things that will have a long-lasting and long-term measurable community benefit for Mercer Island residents, and include impactful project proposals that have a lasting impact on nearby properties throughout the entire downtown based on the design as well as the function of the proposed development. The timeliness, we want to make sure that projects that are positioned to move forward in the near term and commit to some significant milestones that we lay out in a future agreement with the prospective development team. Partnerships, we want respondents with the demonstrated capacity to partner with the city and a proven ability to develop high-quality projects. And then finally, sustainability. I think I may have, partnership, sorry. Partnership respondents, we want them to partner with the city. And what's in the RFQ but not in our, not in the PowerPoint, excuse me, is sustainability. We want to make sure that we have best practices for sustainable developments within the RFQ. I mentioned community benefits. Community benefits include, of course, the underground parking. We're targeting at least 100 or more spaces. Public open space is important. Attractive and functional open space will be important as we evaluate proposals. A well-designed integration of, of the project that enhances the Greta Hackett Outdoor Sculpture and Gallery into the design. Arts and cultural space, we heard about that this evening when we went to look for proposals that include art and culture components that enrich the quality of life amenities for Mercer Island residents. And then finally, housing diversity. The RFQ does note that there have been residents that have expressed a desire to purchase residential units in the town center as well as provide for workforce housing. The selection process will be narrowed. Once we receive all the respondents, staff as well as a committee will evaluate those proposals based on the criteria I've just mentioned. We'll narrow that, that group down to a semifinal list of three or four development teams. Those semifinalists will go through a formal interview process with the staff and the committee. That semifinalist group will also present that information in a presentation to the Mercer Island community. The interview panel will regroup filing those, filing those presentations and informal interviews to narrow it down to two semifinalists that then will be brought to the city council for your consideration to select the preferred development team, and after which the city then... then will start negotiation, exclusive negotiations with a specific development team, leading to a binding development agreement to move forward with the mixed-use development. This is a calendar or a schedule or timeline that I just went through. We would propose that the RFQ be released at the end of the week. That will proceed for the next five or six weeks, in which the teams will develop their proposals, submit those to the city, and we anticipate having council interviews in October, and then council considering the top two finalists at the beginning of November, leading to exclusive negotiating agreement and binding agreement early next year. I'll turn it back over to the city manager for the recommendation.
Council, I look for your approval of the RFQ and selection process this evening so we can kick off this important step in this project timeline. And of course, any questions or any changes?
The council, questions? Bruce?
It was going to be a question, but I took a quick look at the packet. Bob, you, you laid out a number of requirements. You didn't mention the connectedness of Town Center to Light Rail Station and the walkway at the, within the Greta Hackett Outdoor Sculpture Garden, which the fact that you didn't mention it sort of perked my ears up because I thought, oh, that's really important, but as I look at the packet, I see that it is very much listed here, and I do consider it to be an essential element of this, trying to create integration of those different and, you know, currently separate pieces, but creating a natural flow for all of them. And the fact that it's here means that I'm just commenting rather than questioning.
You're exactly right. My, my, it was just simply my mistake in not mentioning it during the presentation. It's certainly a value within RFQ.
With Celine and Dave.
Bob, maybe you can walk me through how a submitter might look at this RFQ and decide, would they be more inclined to put 100 condos into proposal versus 100 workforce housing units, or 50 condos and 50 workforce housing units? You know, is, is it, does one have more weight than another? Does having two versus one of community, one of the kind of listed community benefit items carry some sort of extra weight? How does somebody, thinking about what they might propose, navigate that, that matrix?
As, as we move forward with the RFQ, we're going to be developing a criteria evaluation sheet that then weights the individual elements that we've listed in the RFQ to provide respondents a better understanding of how the city might consider their proposal. Whether or not it's 100 or 50 will largely be simply an exercise of can they support the parking necessary for 100 or 50 units? But in terms of whether or not respondent is able to sort of check the box of a number of community benefits, I would expect that respondent to have a higher weight and a higher score than those who weren't able to do as many. And you've heard from this evening from MICA representative asking for one of the community weights to be valued higher than others. I guess I'd clarify, did that answer your question, or maybe I didn't?
Well, it begs another question. So if somebody came and offered 90 parking spots and workforce housing, and somebody else offered 110 parking spots and no workforce housing?
Oh, I understand.
Is there guidance in the proposal to select the top two?
I believe there will be. Certainly, that what's been a priority for the city is to demonstrate, or have developers demonstrate how they can support the city's parking demands associated with light rail. And so someone who's able to provide 110 spaces versus 90 with a workforce housing component, I would suspect that the higher value and the higher weight should go to the public parking component.
And Council, it would probably be helpful to understand, I mean, mind you, our, some of the community benefits really just came directly from our comp plan, so it's, you know, it shouldn't be a surprise to you. But obviously, there, you might actually weight one thing over another. It certainly would help us in developing the evaluation sheet to hear your feedback about what you prioritize. Of course, as your city manager, I prioritize, I like condos, I like ownership, and so that helps the city, I think financially, you know, that sort of thing, I might, but maybe you value workforce housing, because obviously there's an affordable housing crisis in the region. So probably would be helpful to get some initial input on how we draft that evaluation sheet.
Dave?
So you answered much of my question, but Bob, I'll go to a sort of overly broad question, if you don't mind. You've been through this on several different occasions with several different projects. What, what do you anticipate that process looking like on the front end? Do you think that we'll get two applicants, 10 applicants? Is that winnowing process a mighty one, or do you find it's a fairly select group that's able to fit the bill?
I would like to tell you that I think we would get 10 or 20 different respondents, but you know, the people are very busy right now in terms of development industry. And so I'd be delighted if we had five or six very well-qualified respondents that we can then narrow down to two or three really good teams that are able to, to meet the prerequisites that we've laid out in the RFQ.
Maybe just a follow-up question. In your experience, if you have a, you narrow it down to two, let's say, which will be our process, and one falls out for whatever reason, it's not viable for them, it's not viable for us, do you, do you find that you're able to pull back some of the original applicants, or do those ships tend to sail off and you're?
You know, it depends on the timeframe in which, if you're entering negotiations with a development team and that negotiations is prolonged, it may be that your number-two development team is no longer interested or is no longer capable of performing that same work because they've accepted another job somewhere else, or they're busy. So it really depends on the timeframe. We're entering to our exclusive negotiations with a development team. We want that to, to indicate the seriousness of being able to create a partnership, but if we're not able to do that through those exclusive negotiations within a, within a limited timeframe, we want to have the ability to move to our second choice.
Yeah, okay. Thanks for the patient answer.
So Tom, then Bruce?
Question, just a clarification. This RFQ suggests that they will be condos, and I just want to make sure that I'm reading that correctly, because for the last four years that I've been involved with the community, everybody's asking for condos, not more apartments, and people that are aging out of their homes want to still have ownership in units in the community, so is that, did I read that correctly? This RFQ is for condos specifically?
The RFQ is anticipating a condo structure in terms of an ownership with respect to the parking facility underground, and then above ground being that owned by the developer. But it does give community preference to homeownership.
Okay.
But it doesn't require, if condos in the sense of a single fam, or-
Could end up in a real estate investment trust, like the majority of our properties in the town center, and be rented out as apartments then?
That is, there's a possibility that is correct.
Okay. Is there a way that if we found a developer we liked, I don't know who, Howard S. Wright, Selon, we approached them in the RFQ, or RFP proposal, and said, what we want are X condos, here's the design criteria, they build to the specs that they're provided, that those condos can be pre-sold to fund the project, and the city would still own the retail space and the art center space and the 100 parking places? Because at $600,000 to 1.2 million per condo, you could generate a lot of revenue and turn it into a different type of partnership.
Yeah, that's certainly a possibility. We're not trying to limit the applicant pool or the development proposals by determining at this point whether or not it should be condominiums for the residential component. We've indicated that it could be both for rent as well as for sale, but there is a strong RA preference for homeownership.
And can we be very specific in that, I really-
Want to add more?
Well, what happens is, we get real estate investment trusts, and we did that, or I did that study a few years ago about the valuation of the buildings. They sit in those trusts and they don't turn over. Condos turn over every 10 years, and you have that predictable excise tax coming in, so I think there's a financial benefit to the city from a revenue perspective to have them be condominiums. I think there's a benefit to our community to have them be condominiums, because people want to stay here and they don't have a lot of condo ownership type options. And then thirdly, I think the design opportunities are a lot more favorable to blend with the arts-retail design perspective.
I would say that, you know, really the market forces are going to limit your applicant pools who are willing to invest in a condominium, you know, for-sale product. I mean, there's a reason why the most of the housing multifamily development that you see today is in the for-rent market area, given, you know, the state's condominium regulations and the additional expense. Not, not that that wouldn't change in the future, and I think you're starting to see the multifamily for-rent products starting to slow down a bit, and so that would, you'd expect that your condominium market will then accelerate or at least become stronger. But I don't know if I'd want to propose that at this point until we receive the proposals. That may very well be a discussion we could hold with the selected or the preferred developer about the type of products that he wants to put forward if it's a residential component, which is assumed will, will be.
Bruce?
You, Julia, Bob mentioned the question of whether council wanted to provide more input towards a qualification sheet, I think you called it. And I'm trying to, I guess I'd like to understand is, are you actually asking us to, sort of off-the-cuff opine tonight, looking at this, as to how we'd like to prioritize these things? Or are you suggesting that that might be a separate conversation that is had? Because, and sort of jumping toward that, I'm a little bit concerned that we can give you off-the-cuff ideas, but I'm not sure that that would be as thoughtfully developed as it ought to be before it actually finds its way to, from, from our mouths to paper. The other thing related to that is, given, Bob, your, your suggestion that you expect there might be a handful of qualified applicants coming in, I'm less concerned about the qualification sheet than I would be if you told me we were expecting 100 or 200 applicants, and there really was a desperate need to winnow that down in some very clear way before we even began to look at them in much more detail. But given that we're anticipating quite a small number, I would imagine that we'll look quite closely at all of them, and there'll be an opportunity for conversation then about how they rise or fall based on what we're, what we're seeing. So, long way around saying, my inclination is to hesitate towards trying to give you much in the way of input for what a qualification sheet would look like, because it feels like we might get ourselves a little bit funny with, with giving you ideas, and then you can't quite figure out how strongly to take those or not, or we end up kind of wrapped around an axle here, arguing about whether one should be higher than another, and so I'm, I'm a little hesitant to go there, if that's what you're thinking.
No, thank you. And I would love to be able to tell you that we, we'd receive 10 or 20 respondents, certainly it won't be in the hundreds. And if, and again, if we received five very well-qualified responses, I would, I would think that would be a, you know, a good process for us.
So I'm, I'm going to go ahead and just chime in briefly, because clearly what we have here is the need for some sort of motion that would approve the request for qualifications and selection process. Equally, Julie, you've mentioned this, this concept of a waiting sheet or criteria. We know that there's a motion that you need. Can you articulate a little more specifically regarding this, this, this concept of waiting? Because I too tend to fall where, where Bruce is, is I think that we could find ourselves in a bit of a tangled web if we were to sit here tonight and try to stack rank, in essence, a series of potential community benefits, particularly at this last minute. So can you help us understand more specifically what it is you need, or what you're hoping for?
Mayor, I would say, looking, if you look at the RFQ and the section identified its community benefit on page 13, that obviously is our attempt at kind of providing what we consider really things the council and the community would want to look for in a concept. I think the question I'd love to hear answered this evening is the request from MICA regarding whether or not the council feels strongly one way or the other of kind of, say, moving that arts and culture a little bit higher or not. So I think that's a request, a question, and I certainly would welcome your feedback on that, as far as that would help us design a evaluation sheet that then we could provide to the developers when we have our pre-submission conference and tours. And I think the more clear we are on what we'd like to see on that site, the better.
Just, just want to add on, Mayor, to the city manager's comments, there are five community preferences identified in the RFQ. Parking, of course, is one of those. Parking is also a prerequisite in the proposal as well. And so what might be helpful, just picking up from the city manager's comments, is just a priority, prioritization of those community benefits. If parking is priority number one, is the cultural arts amenities priority number two, and so forth. That might be helpful as we sort of go through a scoring sheet for, for each, for each respondent.
I think I would just start by saying that parking shouldn't even be optional. I would almost put it in a separate paragraph that says, you know, maximum commuter parking necessary, required, whatever strong language it is, because this is ultimately, you know, has been even reflected in the different comments from the public, this is ultimately a public parking project. So to me, to see that as a community benefit and even potentially considered equivalent to some of these other benefits is somewhat misleading, so that, that would be just some of my immediate feedback. Council, that would leave four remaining bullet points, so to speak. Is there an appetite, a sense that this evening that we would want to go into a waiting, or, I'm, I'm seeing, Dave, do you want to elaborate?
Yeah, I wanted to say, say two things. Back to the original comment I was going to make, is I would encourage us to allow the net to be cast as widely as possible, and then let's do our filtering process once we get applicants. The worst-case scenario is that we somehow engineer a preconceived solution today that becomes distasteful to potential applicants, and we don't see them, so allowing that. I did see the same thing that, that the mayor saw, which is, why do we not put parking as a requirement? Is that sort of the whole?
Yeah, I think, I think that was the intent. It's, it's included in both places, and I was, as I look at the community benefits, you could, you could take that community benefit parking, roll it up to the requirement team qualification sections, where we talk about a conceptual preliminary estimate number of commuter parking spaces, and then indicate the city envisioned underground parking facility of 100 or more parking spaces.
Okay.
And so it just puts it into the other category of, of waiting.
Got it, got it. And then to the MICA question, is there a, is there a concern, I don't know if we want to hear from MICA since they're here, is there a concern that that position on the preferences scale makes it not as, doesn't make it pop to a potential applicant as much as it should, or, I'm asking you all, but I don't know.
I, I think I'd like to hear from the city manager.
Well, you know, I think part of this is putting it out there and seeing if the market will come back and support something like that. We have talked with a developer that has expressed an interest in supporting an arrangement like that. Obviously, the city has said many times to Paul Schumaker that the city has no money for the MICA portion of that project, and obviously, I'm assuming a developer would be looking, you know, to ensure that whoever comes and is part of this project has the capital, so, yeah.
Just to close that out, I, I think, I'm glad that we have the preference for arts and culture in there. Obviously, that's a direct point at MICA, and I just want to make sure, you know-
And I just want to make sure, you know, certainly we're not providing money for the project, but if there's more that we can do in terms of our support, this is the time to do it. And we've included in the RFQ, and we shouldn't go in that tepidly. So if there's more that would help that cause, we can, this would be the time to maybe have that discussion.
Salim?
So it kind of goes back to what I asked earlier, which is, you know, how does a submitter look at these preferences and make some decisions about what they might include and might not? I think one of the ways that they might do that is just this council recording, right? I think any serious bidder is going to come back to this. They're going to look at proceedings tonight, and they're going to get a sense of how the council felt about these preferences. I do think that parking needs to be in a stack of its own, right? That any proposal that is put forth more parking spots than another is going to get deferential treatment. Doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be selected, but I think there should be a strong message in the RFQ that says, this is a parking-first proposal, always has been, and that's our intent. I do look at the site, and I look at the assemblage of the Tully's property, parcel 12, and the rights of ways, and then I know some of the discussions that are occurring in terms of constructing a gateway and using some of the surface areas to have plazas and open spaces. So I get all that. And some of that is a bit kind of under discussion. I do think that I would give a higher preference to something that involved a space for the arts, because I think that we might leave some juice on the table by saying, it's only about parking and not giving any additional deference to a space for the arts. It does a couple of things for the community. It does solve a problem we can't solve with zoning. We're not going to make a code in Town Center that says, build a beautiful building and include an art center. It's never going to happen. We can do that with affordable housing. We can do that with public open plazas and some of the other incentives with mid-block connections. But I don't think we're ever going to get to a point where we could say, put an art center into just a purely private development. So it's an opportunity lost if we don't provide guidance to submitters to give that additional deference. I certainly would. I would almost take this list and just stack rank it as it is, moving parking to a requisite and saying, we would give, I would give personally, I would give more preference to pedestrian bicycle connections, and then well-designed integration and gateway characteristics, arts and cultural events and spaces, and then housing diversity in that order. That would be my preference. If that's the level of guidance that you need to kind of hit the ground running with a matrix that's going to develop as the ground develops, you know, maybe that's enough. But I think certainly my public comments would give guidance to any submitter that I would like to see that as part of this proposal, a place for the arts, because I think that there's plenty of opportunity to put parking into that site, and I think there is some facilities opportunity there as well.
Bruce?
I would support what Salim has suggested. I think that parking is off the list because it was the essential element to begin. I think the next two are absolutely necessary to have things function as they should function. But then beyond that, trying to get an art center, I would place, add a higher priority than trying to get housing diversity there. So that would be my inclination. You know, as a bullet list, it's not apparent that it's ranked, right? It's just equal points, things, but as Salim suggests, giving at least some, I mean, then you immediately get into the, you know, what's the, yeah, what's the relative importance of them, but giving somewhat greater weight to them in that order makes sense to me.
Tom, then Dave?
I agree with Ramir Bassett's, the way he categorized those, and I would strike the housing diversity. I'd like to put more emphasis on being very specific to condominium ownership. It might be last on the list, but the rest of it, the housing diversity, I just don't see how that would work in the model. Julie made another comment earlier about how you've already met with developers, and I think some of the council members have as well. I think that we should extend the RFQ bidding process to give an opportunity for others who haven't had an opportunity to meet with the city or city council, a fair opportunity to really evaluate the proposal.
Yeah. I just want to clarify your point about housing diversity. When you asked Bob Stowe the question about, does this preclude multifamily, is it from a rental perspective? I don't think this bullet, per se, is what is allowing that. This is giving, I think, some priority to condo ownership and workforce housing, not any priority to rental units. Those, he's saying, are allowed, but not, I don't think, reflected by this bullet.
I get it. What I'm trying to say is I very prescriptively wanted to call out that these would be units that would be sold as condominium complexes. The real estate investment trust model is not something that I'm supportive of. If that's the way that we have to go, then we have to go that way. But I know one of our representatives, Tana Sen, is working on the legislation that addresses some of the insurance issues that came out of the construction industry in the 1980s. And I understand why people built the apartment models over the condominiums, but I really think that we could capture another benefit for our community and for our city if we move to make it more explicit that there's a benefit to condominium structures.
I think, Dave? Dave, and then I'm going to try to work us into some sort of finalization here.
Yeah, I was going to actually try and help us do that, too. I think to speak to Tom, I think you would, we'll have that opportunity to make those decisions later once we have applicants. I think you would unnecessarily narrow the pool of applicants by what could be 70%. And I think that's a dangerous position for us to be in when you say, if we have to go that way, we will. But if we say it's only, we'll only allow condo developments, then you may end up with no applicants at all, and I think that's a dangerous position for us to be in. So we can make those choices as we have those applicants, if we have a condo applicant versus an apartment applicant, if that's important, we can do that at that time. But back to the arts thing, that was my original comment, was I think all we're trying to say, hopefully I don't want to represent everybody here, but I think all we're trying to say is, we want to be clear to the applicants that the developer's ability to execute on an art center as part of the project is important to the council. I think that's what we're hearing from the majority. I don't, if you disagree, speak.
I think that was a good start at summary, because what I was just going to try to go through and articulate what I've heard, and hopefully people can chime in, the extent to which I'm accurate or inaccurate, and again, representing the majority of voices here, versus that parking does get removed and put into its own hyper-mandatory category, if that's possible. The remaining four bullet points, public open spaces, well-designed integration, arts and cultural event and spaces, and housing diversity. What I have heard and I would agree with is basically that prioritization. I personally would. And I think that seems to be fairly consistent here. So just taking a pause there. Julie, does that provide you with what you need in that sense? We are left talking a little bit more about what exactly does housing diversity mean, but I want to just weigh in momentarily on the arts and cultural events and spaces bullet point here. One of the things that I appreciated was that it was, first of all, included. I also felt that the initial bullet point, as drafted, is a little bit general and a little bit vague, and I tried to imagine if I was a developer who was not particularly well-versed in the conversations the communities had, what does that mean? Now, we all know they can go do, and they should go do, some serious research, but the extent to which any council member has any cause for concern, I would suggest that we just borrow some of the language that they put in their letter, such that it says inclusion of arts, let me get this right, arts and cultural components such as arts, performances, education, and collaboration venues, which is actually what came from their letter, so that it's quite specific. Fellow council members, any concern with that modification to the wording? Okay. So then that, yep.
You were looking at me, so yes, I'm okay with the wording on the arts part.
Okay. So then, we're at the housing diversity. Tom has a strong preference for seeing some element in there that focuses on ownership, shall we say, which doesn't necessarily exclude the workforce housing component of it. Fellow council members, Dave, you've said you would like to keep it broader in general.
I support Tom's intent, but I prefer Dave's approach with the cast a wide net in these early stages and then bring this in as part of the conversation later.
Salim?
So I'm going to stick with, I think he's misinterpreted the bullet, and it's fine as it is. And if I was a submitter, I would read that bullet and I would take it to mean a condo. If I built a condo, that would be something that I had some preference. Or, equal preference would be workforce housing. That's how I read that bullet. I don't read that bullet to mean if I build a building, sell it to a REIT, and then make it apartments, that that's what that's talking about. But I don't think it's a constraint. I think it's just a preference.
Is that true, Bob? Because if we're giving preferential treatment to condos and workforce housing, I'm okay. But most of the developers that I've worked with in my construction history prefer the apartments because it turns into a cash cow and they can unload it into a trust. But if the way that Salim's interpreting it is correct, I'm okay with the language.
It includes the preferences for homeownership, and it also includes workforce housing. Now, workforce housing could mean, you know, a certain percentage of the AMI for both rental units or homeownership units.
And in our evaluation criteria, a developer that came in and said, these are going to be owner-occupied units.
They would receive a preference.
They would receive a preference.
That's correct.
Then, deputy mayor, I'm okay with it.
Okay. Well, in that case, it sounds like we have reached consensus. So Julie, Bob, team, are, do you have what you need?
Yes, Mayor, as far as, as far as the timeline goes, I think in consulting with Bob, I think we feel, let's keep with our timeline and then extend it if we, if it's materializing that we're not getting a lot of interest, if you don't mind. That would be the recommendation.
I guess I look at it a different way, Julie, and that perception can become reality, and I just, I think it's better to extend it a month so that the month that has been invested in conversations with others gives that other person a month to catch up. But I'm one of four.
I'm just going to ask council if there's any consensus, any additional interest from any other council members to extend the process. Not seeing none.
I mean, and since, no. It just, since July, when you had your first RFQ conversation, we started having calls from interested developers. So they're aware and probably have seen at least the draft at this point. So I guess if council's agreeable, let's stick with the timeline and then adjust if we come back and we don't have that great a pool.
Ready for motion?
Excuse me? Yeah.
I would move to approve the request for qualifications and selection process for the proposed transit commuter parking and public-private mixed-use project on the Tully's parcel 12 site, including the mandatory element of parking and the additional prioritization of an arts and culture center.
Maybe it's just to take the remaining preference items and give them.
Additional weight when the stacking, the ranking.
The ranking, in the order in which they appear.
Can I say, as amended by Salim? Or do I need to say that all over again?
Yes.
As amended by Salim. Yes, need a second. Second.
Okay. So we have a motion, we have amended motion, we have a second to the amended motions, and now we're voting on the amended motion.
Not exactly. That's not a formal amendment.
Okay, okay. Because when you seconded it after Salim had seconded it, I'm.
No, I don't think Salim seconded it.
All right, then my misunderstanding. All right, so, all in favor, signify by the seat of the House.
Let's make sure the city clerk is okay with what we've got at this point. Are you?
You didn't finish the motion. I mean, he made a recommendation, but it wasn't a formal second. I mean, I don't think you have an amendment. I think you just have a motion and a second on the floor.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing the motion pass. Thanks.
Excuse me? I just wanted to clarify in terms of what just happened. I want to clarify that the main motion was not amended. However, the motion as made, I think it was clear before it was made that there was council direction about the priorities, I'm sorry, the preferences and how they're stacked ranked. So I believe that that will be captured. I just wanted the council to have assurance that your direction and feedback was heard, even though it wasn't captured in the motion.
Good.
No, you didn't do a good job.
Okay, so with that, I think we're just going to try again on the next AB, which is Agenda Bill 5462, the 2019-2020 biennial budget council direction. Julie and Chip.
Counsel, this evening, I am seeking confirmation on the council direction for the 2019-2020 biennial budget in light of the contingency fund target recommendation made by Management Partners. In your packet, regrettably, I provide some preliminary service level reductions for your early consideration. Tonight's discussion is not intended for a detailed budget discussion, so if you could please hold off, we have about six meetings this fall devoted to the budget and the CIP. I'm going to turn it over to Chip Quarter, our Assistant City Manager, Finance Director, to highlight so far the direction we've heard and to review some of the structural deficit numbers with you.
Good evening. So as a reminder, at your mini-planning session back on June 9th, you gave us direction, prudent direction, to assume no levity lift in building the preliminary budget. We also, the direction received at that time was to use our one-time fund balances in various places to fund services temporarily over the biennium or otherwise, and to minimize service level reductions. Other key assumptions included 2% growth in property tax, that's 1% from new construction, 1% optional voted by the council. It assumes the beautification fund is combined with the general fund, which nets $245,000 in net revenue for the general fund beginning in '19. Assumes no utility tax increases, tax rate increases, and no BNO tax rate increases in the coming six-year period. That was the direction received back then. And July 10th, when Steve Toller from Management Partners presented to the council regarding the forecast by the city, he also mentioned that the city's contingency fund target at 10% of general fund expenditures is unusually low, and a best practice is to be at two months of general fund expenditures, which equals about 17%. I should just mention that the current policy or target for our contingency fund at 10% equals about 1.2 months versus two months of general fund expenditures. Staff is recommending, under this scenario, which assumes no levity lift, that we build toward that 17% target over time. We have enough money to get to the one-and-a-half-month target, which equals 12.5% of general fund expenditures. We think that is prudent, and that also leaves us a chunk of change to help balance the budget in '19 and '20, if needed. As a reminder, the contingency fund is our rainy day fund. It serves multiple purposes, but primarily, when there's an economic downturn, like during the Great Recession, we tap that fund. When there's a natural catastrophe, if something unforeseen happens, for example, a lawsuit When there's a natural catastrophe, if something unforeseen happens, for example, a lawsuit that's not covered by WCIA, it'd be funded by the city. This is a place that you turn to. In terms of the biennial budget for '19 and '20, the strategy to meet this target and to balance the budget is threefold. One, we would use $911,000 to raise the target from 10% to 12.5% or one-and-a-half months. We would use almost $2 million in one-time resources to balance the budget in '19 and '20. And really, what this is, this is a temporary bridge, is what that is, right? It just buys you time. If a levy lift fails, it gives you the chance to stabilize services as much as possible and to go back out to the community in 2020 or '21. And this also requires $1.2 million in round numbers and service level reductions to balance the budget, which are detailed on page two of the agenda bill. Okay. Let me just kind of frame things for you. I'll try to explain this to the best of my ability. This is looking out four years, '19 through 2022. Let's look at '19 first. These are the ongoing expenditure reductions, and in '19, you'll see $437,000, that's net. Net because while there are technically three FTEs that are identified in this scenario, okay, plus some non-FTE-related costs, there also is unfunded mandate regarding police records. And so we added half FTE beginning in '19, so it nets out to two and a half FTE reduction in '19. Now, this is ongoing, so you'll see that continues from '19, '20, '21, and '22. When you get to '20, you need an additional $374,000 to balance the budget. So the sum of the $811,000 under '20, '20, plus the $437,000, gets you that $1.25 million. That's what the total net service reductions are on Julie's table on page two. Or for the biennium, five employees is what the reduction is. But again, a number of reductions are non-employee related. You look out beyond this coming biennium to 2021, you need an additional $3.44 million in reductions to balance the budget. That equals 31 employees. That's the FTE equivalent. Then when you go 2022, you need an additional $680,000, okay? That's an additional six employees. Questions on this table?
Just to make sure I understand, so the 2.5, I'm looking at the bottom line, FTE cuts each year.
Yep.
The 2.5 happens, 2.5 in the 2020 is in addition to the 2.5 in '19.
Yep. Additive.
31 is in addition to the five that we've already cut, and six is in addition.
Each year. That's how many you'd have to cut.
Thank you.
Yep. So just trying to frame things for you. Under this scenario, again, we're using about $2 million in addition to this $1.25 million in expenditure reductions to help square things away and minimize service level reductions. But you'll see 2021, there's a pretty big cliff, right, in terms of that additional $3.44 million, which equals 31 employees. On page two, here's a summary of what's listed there, and just trying to frame it by department. So, you know, a total of $1.25 million of net reductions. You'll see $215,000 for fire, $136,000 for non-departmental, about $440,000 for parks and recreation, $100,000 for public works, this is for the biennium, of course, police, $185,000, and then youth and family services, just under $300,000. There's the police records support and add of $126,000. And just a reminder, this, and just for the benefit of new council members, this is carved in clay at this point. This is seeking preliminary direction from the council. This is Julie's recommendation, your city manager. And as we get into October and November, we'll be reviewing the budget with the council. We'll have more information after the ballot measure is voted on in early November. And let's say it fails, you then can look at this list and you might make some adjustments, right, in November. But this is your city manager's best recommendation at this point in time, under a no levy lift or under a scenario where it doesn't pass.
And assuming the 12.5%.
Thank you. And assuming the value of building up that target. Quickly, a calendar. So we're seeking that preliminary direction tonight, so we can, because we're still, usually we've already finished-
Preliminary direction on the contingency fund.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. And also, it's just being okay with the reductions that are in place, recognizing that we, there are no easy reductions. We have to do something under this scenario. This is what we recommend, and you'll have the opportunity to visit that in detail again in October and November. We'll deliver the budget to you on October 16th, the actual budget document. We'll have a budget overview presentation at that meeting. On October 23rd, we'll review the entire operating budget, which will be broken down by department. Each director will present his or her budget to the council. That's a long meeting. On November 5th, we'll review the capital budget, the CIP, which is really six years, but we'll focus on the first two years, '19 and '20, as the capital budget portion of the six-year CIP. Also, look at utility rates that are proposed that same night. November 20th is when you finalize everything. You'll have the results of the levied ballot measure. You'll be holding a public hearing. You'll be finalizing changes to the budget, adopting property tax ordinances, adopting utility rate resolutions, and a few other things for that matter. And then finally, on December 4th, is when you adopt the 19-20 budget. Yes, ma'am?
I think Saleem's got a question.
Oh, sorry.
Now, I don't want to interrupt the flow, but I want to ask a question about these cards that came in the mail. So I got this card-
Oh, assessed value?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I got the assessed value notice in the mail, and I think this is kind of a lesson to the community.
Yeah.
Can you tell me, since the property value on this card went up about 10%, did the city just solve some part of this financial crisis by this happening? Can you just kind of explain that?
Yeah. It's interesting, because I had contacted King County in late July to get an early read on assessed valuation, and I was told at that time, we haven't done Mercer Island yet. And so everywhere else in King County's going up 10% to 11%. We assumed the same thing will happen for Mercer Island, but I couldn't get ahold of that information. So I've heard from you and from others anecdotally that people seem to attend 11% on their individual bills. Does this solve our problem? No. And this is no different than a year ago, okay, where values also went up 10%, 11%, and 12% in some cases. And when the council adopted the levy in November of last year, okay, well, assessed valuation was going up 10% to 12%. You only have, you set the levy amount, not the levy rate. And so you could set the 2018 levy was 1% more than the 2017 levy, plus new construction, that was another, whatever that was, one something percent. And so the fact that assessed valuation went up so much a year ago, that had no benefit to the city. We didn't see a 10% increase. If we had, we wouldn't be having this conversation, right, about a levy lift, and we wouldn't have that even on the ballot measure for that matter. The rate came down to ensure that we collect only 1% more from existing property owners.
Can you just tell people what 1% more was last year in terms of dollars?
Yeah, that is 100, in round numbers, it was just under $130,000 for the city, and on a median assessed value home, $1.2 million, that's 12 bucks.
And so said another way, it's about 1.3 employees per year? Because isn't our average cost just about 100?
Fully loaded, it's about 100,000, 105.
Thanks.
Tom?
Yeah, I'd just like to hear from Julie on the proposal, because I feel like either I misunderstood, or maybe the direction was not clearly provided when we started to give direction on the budget. So can you explain how philosophically you went through this? And the reason for my question is, I thought we, as a council, and I could be wrong, it wouldn't be the first time, that we put a priority on public safety and our mental health counselors. And so when I went through the spreadsheet that you provided, it shows eliminating geriatric mental health counseling, but yet we're going to keep money in the budget for Arch, which is an off-island interest. So I'm wondering, did we not give you a good list of priorities to set the budget? Or did you have a different philosophy?
No. I think the council was clear about the school-based counselors and funding that through the 18-19 academic year. That was the direction I got. In addition, it was mainly, if, the key assumptions was the primary direction. Obviously, when you're talking a $30 million budget, and over time, 1 million, and then the subsequent biennium, another 4 million, it's going to eat into your priorities. It can't, you know, I don't know how it can't.
I get that.
Yeah.
I'm just asking, if we gave you a table similar to the evaluation criteria that we just gave Bob Stone, the developers, and we said, "Public safety, fire, mental health counselors, et cetera, et cetera," would you have built this budget differently? Because I kind of put mental health counselors in the same vein as safety. It's early intervention.
Sure.
There are a lot of shootings and things out there, so I was just surprised to see that-
See that.
-we chose to leave a $50,000 donation to Arch, but eliminate one of the positions.
Well, I based that on consulting with our directors who provide this service and asking for their input on my preliminary recommendation. So in essence, I want to make sure we're providing some level of service. And so they assured me that is still being, a big part of what's recommended is we're still providing some level of service. Maybe not the same level of service, but the service is still being provided. So I think, I still feel like I'm meeting your priorities, I'm just reducing some of that. Obviously, over time, you may certainly have different priorities for me, but I'm also going to make recommendations based on risk, exposure, you know, things that maybe the average citizen isn't necessarily thinking about. And so some of that is also involved in my thinking that I would present to the council.
Bruce?
I guess not so much a question as a bit of history, but maybe a little bit different perspective. Our Arch, Tom, you speak of it as a donation or a contribution, and I think it's important to recognize that it serves as a, effectively as a department of the city and of the surrounding cities that use it, in the intent of trying to help alleviate the homelessness problems that we're seeing and that are very much at our doorstep. And so I would take a different perspective, I guess, in describing it simply as, well, money spent on youth and family services is somehow money spent on our community, and money that's going to Arch is somehow simply a donation to an outside organization. In both cases, we're trying to provide part of the safety net that community, like ours, at least many of the folks in our community, would perceive as an important part of the role that we have as a governmental entity. And so the decision to continue to fund Arch is something that I would be very supportive of.
It's also, if you, Councilmember Bass, you might recall this, it's also part of the GMA requirements as well. So that's another factor that goes into what's being presented to you, obviously, our mandates that we're forced to think of. And, you know, I think a good one is the records specialist involved in the police department. Why would I rank that one above a patrol officer? But when I see the exposure and risk of not delivering records, and WCI will not, our risk pool will not support those lawsuits. Those are on us. And so I really want to limit our exposure in those cases. So I know that some of this doesn't necessarily make sense on the surface, but those are the kinds of things I'm considering, our mandates, reducing our risk, our liability.
Okay. Hold on, Tom. I'm just going to remind council that tonight, we have a motion in front of us that pertains to the contingency fund, and that there will be weeks and weeks and weeks of opportunity to debate the merits of particular positions, services, programs, et cetera. And rather than get into some of that tonight, prior to all of us having had the opportunity to do some of the homework that we'll all need to do before October, that perhaps we could pull back and come back to the AB.
And I'm just going off of the purpose of this agenda item, is to revisit the direction to staff from the June 9th mini-planning session. And I don't think my question's been answered insofar as the priorities with which Julie put a budget together. If we're just going to talk about increasing the reserve fund so that we have to decrease more positions, that's definitely one topic. But it was very heavy on reducing positions, and I didn't see very much in the area of reducing other expenses. I mean, and that's where I'm surprised. I mean, we could cut out the city council meals, it's a small part, or the one-on-one meals, or any of those things. And I'm wondering why we are eliminating staff positions without seeing those types of reductions in here. So I feel like we, as a council, didn't outline the priorities correctly in the June 9th mini-planning session.
The only two priorities that are referenced here in this AB, and I'm just trying to create some clarity here, is the assumption of no levy lift, or, sorry, assumes no levy lift, meaning it doesn't pass. And I think we've reiterated that. Draws down on all available one-time monies to avoid or minimize service level reductions, which is, again, something that I think, I'll leave Julie to elaborate on, but essentially also seeing that 1.99 million in one-time funding is going toward the 19-20 biennium I took as your interpretation of that. I think it's super important for us to understand, these reductions are a preliminary view. These are not cast in stone. Those conversations, the specific conversations, will happen in October as we go through the different departmental reviews, fund reviews, et cetera. So I understand that it's an important question. I'm not sure I'm understanding the extent to which it pertains to tonight's.
Well, I'm just going from the language, and I take it very literally, that there is, the council directed staff to build a budget that, one, assumes no levy lift. Absolutely true. We did that. All of us sat up here and reiterated, we wanted to see cost containment during that discussion as well. We also reiterated how important the counselors were. We also reiterated public safety. We talked about the survey. I went back and I reviewed the tape. So granted, those detailed discussions are going to come in October, but Julie's got a lot of work to do, and she reiterates to us over and over that she's overworked and understaffed. If we don't give her clear direction upfront, she might come back and we'll make mincemeat of it later, and then we're scrambling to the finish line. I'm just asking a simple question. How did we prioritize eliminating jobs and public safety over other reductions? And I don't understand that. So I was just asking for that clarification so that I could move forward.
So I, okay, I thought I said, I consulted with directors and getting their advice on whether or not I could, in essence, still maintain quality level of service and also still find 1.2 million in reductions. And so I didn't do this in a vacuum. I consulted with all my directors on this. So I'm trying my best to maintain, you know, and try not to impact our residents. This is what I was able to do. And I think you may have, you know, a different outcome you want to see. In light of, we had January 9th, you gave us some really clear direction. Even with that direction, we still had to balance the budget with roughly $430,000 in cuts. Since hearing in early July, Management Partners saying, "Your, one, your assumptions and your forecast is reasonable, so that's good. But hey, you haven't even factored into your forecast a recession, and boy, your contingency fund is woefully low." I thought I should return to council, because we didn't get into a very detailed discussion that evening, of course, to say, "Well, now's the time before we spend down all the one-time money that we have." money that we have to try to save a little bit more for a rainy day. So before I work with staff to build you a balanced budget, I thought it would be prudent if I returned to the council and sought your direction on that, if you want to do that. And that's really what tonight is about.
Saleem?
Yeah, so I'll just build on that. I agree with Julie. I remember distinctly, because I was the person that made the motion of how that waterfall might solve a biennium budget gap, and it did leave YFS completely unfunded, which is the 400,000 that you're talking about. All this move is doing is the council giving you direction after having received the management partner's update. And there was quite a bit that was done with that. There was the insertion of the recession, but there was also the optimizations, and there was some true ups on growth and spending. But largely, we ended up where we started. And so I would support this motion of bolstering the contingent funds. I think we can see pretty clearly that, you know, two and a half FTEs, two and a half FTEs, 31, whatever it was, 31, 33. All we're doing here by not spending down the reserves is pushing pain a little bit further off. It doesn't go very far. But if this, if these are the recommendations of the directors, and the directors feel that they might be able to get through biennium and hold service levels where they are, I'm not going to question their guidance on that.
Did you want to make a motion?
So I'm going to move to adopt the 1.5 months contingency fund target as outlined in the staff's budget balancing recommendation.
All right, council, it's, a motion's been made and seconded. Comments?
So I will support this motion, but with a bit of hesitation. And that hesitation is because if you, if you look at these cuts, you can begin to see some significant decrease in services to our community, but it's nothing to what's coming in the biennium after that. If, if that's where we end up, if the levy lid lift doesn't pass. We, we're looking at six times the cuts, five versus 31, just in, well, except it was 31 plus another six, so it's 37 versus just five. So it's seven times as many cuts. So to my mind, if we were to change anything, what we would do is actually cut deeper now to set aside more money such that we smoothed the curve going into that second biennium, such that we are, we are not, I mean, what you essentially would do is set aside a bit of money such that you are, rather than cutting 37 jobs in that biennium, you're cutting something less than that. And I think from a continuity of service standpoint, that would make sense. But I, I think that is so drastic, the effect on our community is so drastic, that we really will have no choice but to find another approach to this. And it will force us into, of course, taking severe cuts, but it will also force us into doing, taking other steps to try and increase revenues. And so if we're going to change this, that's the direction I would suggest changing it. But I think you've struck a good balance, Chip, with what you've proposed here, and Julie with what you've proposed here. And I'm happy to support this as we get into this budget season. It's going to be, I think, difficult for all of us to accept if that is where we end up, but that, you know, that may be the nature of the beast.
Tom?
Yeah, I, and Bruce, what you're saying really resonates with me. And that's why I'm still very surprised, because usually when I've been through ups and downs in the economy and manage budgets, very large budgets, and usually we look for process improvements, administrative expenses, and waste. And I, if the levy doesn't pass, I don't believe that eliminating the geriatric specialist or the school counselors is the right solution. If we can identify process improvements and those administrative costs, we could preserve and protect those positions. But I also heard Julie say that she talked to the directors and there'd be no loss of service. So like Saleem said, I respect the directors, and if they don't need those positions.
I don't think she said no loss of service. I think she said reduction in service, preserving some element. But Julie, I'll let you.
Yeah, well, whatever. I mean, we can go back and look at the tape later. But when the, when we talk about public safety and one of our officers in those areas with light rail coming and all of the new pressures on the system, I'm very uncomfortable. So I don't think I'll support this proposal as it stands right now. And I just hope that going forward, we'll look at some process improvements rather than the headcount reductions.
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and weigh in. And I think Bruce raises some interesting points. Yes, I'm going to support this. I think it's important to build that contingency fund for all the reasons that have been outlined. But equally so, we're still using almost $2 million in one-time funding to bridge the biennium. We have a financial sustainability plan that I think we are all, I'm sensing, committed to whether the levy passes or not. It's a requirement of the levy, but I certainly wouldn't see it exclusive to the levy. And I would also ask Julie and staff, as we prepare for what's coming in that second biennium, we've had a lot of conversations about learning how to do business differently. And I think that's some of what Tom is alluding to, be they, I wouldn't say waste, but certainly there's different ways to do the work that we've done to date, perhaps more efficient, different, but more efficient. Does the staff have the, and I'm just going to say resourcing, because that can be people, dollars, time, et cetera, to pursue some of those different projects that came up in conversations with the CAG, such as evaluating our fire delivery, evaluating our social services delivery, and evaluating our court services, et cetera. So we don't have to answer that tonight, but I would encourage you to make sure that when you do come to us, that there is resourcing available to do the really, really hard work that's going to set us up for the biennium '21, '22. Council, any more questions, comment, or are we ready for a vote?
Question. Hey, Julie, who manages all the counselors, the community counselors? It's all through YFS and not the school board, right? So then it's our responsibility to apply for grants and funding? And the reason why I'm asking that is that the October 26 review, the question was brought up by maybe David De Souza or somebody like that, that there's a lot of funding out there, and we pay about $2 million into the system. And I just read another article that said $12.6 million have been granted to almost every single school entity except for Mercer Island and maybe another one. And I'm just wondering, are we on top of that? I mean, it's
Are you referencing the Best Starts for Kids?
Yeah, because we have I'd like to know how many grants we applied for. I know, Cindy, I watched the tape today, and you said you were bird dogging it, and you were going to apply. And does that factor into the budget at all?
Yeah. We follow all of the Best Starts for Kids funding, and we have, we, we don't really, they, they, they give funds in large amounts to larger entities, and it's often not small shops like we are. So I've reached out to some organizations that we could, we could work with. We would be a small piece of what they do. There hasn't been a good match yet. We don't really match. It's going to be very hard to qualify for some of those. Our demographics don't match up, so it's unlikely that we will get that. We will do whatever we can.
I mean, I trust you, but it's just every other district got funding except for us.
And are you going by school district? Or why?
Maybe we can
There's different funding differences. I just want to say that we're following the best we can and making as many collaborative relationships that we can, and we've not met a match yet, so.
Okay. Council, are we ready for a vote? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. Motion passes 4-1. So that actually concludes the agenda bills, and we now move on to other business. Do we have any upcoming council? Well, first, let's just go ahead and excuse the council members that are absent, if we choose to. Is there a motion?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Are you in favor, Tom?
Oh, yeah, seconded, aye.
Okay, great. All right, so now, do we have any upcoming council member absences to report, to anticipate? We have a busy fall, hoping everybody's going to be here.
Hey, where did we fall in at one meeting? I saw an email something about we accidentally scared on Yom Kippur.
We're going to hit the planning schedule next. And I can see the two would be interrelated.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So I just will again mention, I will miss the second October meeting and the additional special meeting that's in October, unfortunately.
Okay. All right. With that, Julie, the planning schedule?
I'm sorry, Mayor. Councilor Bassett, which meetings would you be missing October?
The October, I think it's a 16 and a 26 or something like.
23 is the special meeting?
Yes. Thank you, Saleem.
Thank you. So council, if you want to get into the planning schedule, I'd like to see if you would be available for a executive session next Tuesday, September 4th, at 5:30 to 6:00 regarding potential litigation. That is something we just, just today realized we need to consult with you on. Regarding our conflict with Yom Kippur, I did ask council members if you might be available instead on Monday, the 17th. It looked like most council members were available. Another option would be the following week, on September 25th. So it really comes, you know, it's really up to the council at this point. But I have heard really from most council members who felt the 17th would work fine.
Fine for me.
Is that okay? Okay?
An executive session's fine for me.
Okay.
Did you say for executive session, it was a half hour or an hour?
We think we will only need 30 minutes.
Okay.
So 5:30?
Yes, and we'll
And that's next week?
Provide, yeah. Mm-hmm. Next week. And then we, in consultation with the mayor and deputy mayor, typically that last meeting in December, we cancel it, but we would like to add fiscal sustainability plan to that last meeting. So if you hopefully are not out of town and can attend that meeting, I think it will set us up quite well for important topics ahead. So if you can make sure you're here for that.
So just, it's December 18th, and interestingly enough, the Mercer Island School District is not getting out until the following week. So those of us who have kids have a high probability of being in town. The school district is actually out until the 7th of January. No, so preceding the two weeks, so we're in school, if I read the calendar correctly. In session, thank you, in session through the 21st.
And then I, you may not have noticed, also a special meeting that on December 11th, and this is where we'd like to get in the practice of having you meet jointly with the Planning Commission and get in the habit of really defining their work plan for the year. And so that meeting is really designed to look and review their work plan and obviously celebrate successes of the work plan that they've just completed. So if you can make sure you have that on your calendar, that would be great.
As long as we're talking about dates, I noted that January, our first meeting in January would be on New Year's Day. Is that something we're looking at changing? Works for me, but if there was an intent to, yeah, an intent to change that, we should discuss that as well.
According to your rules, yeah, so if that happens according to your rules, it would happen on January 2nd, would be your meeting. I've put on the planning schedule potentially canceling that, but then that means you wouldn't meet until January 15th, so.
Because again, school is out on January 2nd.
Right.
So we had some conversations with Ally, and I think, because then we're backing up against the planning session as well.
That's right.
And, you know, pretty heavy workload even coming out of the budget season.
Right.
So I'd say keep your calendars at hand, and hopefully in the next week or two, we'll be able to provide some line of sight into January and February.
Okay, so you don't want to have us pencil in the 8th, shifting it a week right now? I mean, that would be my thought, is if you need a meeting in there, that would be the logical time to do it, but.
If you don't mind, we can pencil that in as a potential meeting?
We can. I thought there was a
There's some reason.
I thought there was a reason. But if it's in pencil, sure.
That would be great.
Yeah. Thank you.
The, the, the two questions I have is on the planning schedule, the code of conduct and ethics issue, is that on an agenda yet?
Yes, Councilmember Acker, we have tentatively scheduled that for your October 16th meeting, code of ethics. And, oh, I wanted to also note, currently Initiative 1631 was tentatively scheduled for October 2nd, but we will be able to move that up to September 17th.
And then Bruce, that topic that you and I covered the other day, you want to grab that?
Sure, I mentioned it to Julie in a conversation we had the other day, that the not-weed topic has been
Yes.
raised here in the council.
Our new parks director has that on her work plan, as well as our city attorney. So, but given how loaded your schedules are, it's possible that won't orbit back around to the council till your planning session, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, the only reason I asked, and maybe it doesn't even need to come back in here, but it's something Bruce and I are both pretty vested in, and maybe we could
Oh, no, you'll need to review it, because I don't, I guess I'm not envisioning it's going to be that simple.
Oh, okay.
But I, but I want to consult with our Parks and Reg Director and have her advise us on that.
And we should welcome, because this is her, because this is her, I believe, her first official city councilwoman, not the first time she's been with us, but you joined August 1st? And so we have not met since late July. You feel like a seasoned Mercer Island leadership team member.
Julie, I would just point, I would just point out that Paul was the one who highlighted to me the idea, and it caught me by surprise, but immediately made sense, but that what we're talking about here is not our parks, but private properties, and therefore this is perhaps more a DSG topic, although I think parks would certainly be an informative source for information about it. But just as you're, as you're thinking about who to have in the room, I think you'll, you'll find that's necessary.
Thank you, yes. I was looking at it more comprehensively, like if you were wanting to have some carrots and some sticks in the approach, which is where I thought parks might be helpful. But let's talk about that, because I do think it's a, you know, really admirable to have that vision for the island, and I'm just wanting to set it up for the greatest chance of success.
And I think you meant Paul West? Okay, any further questions regarding planning schedule? All right. There are no board appointments this evening, however, just to clarify, we will have two appointments to the Design Commission scheduled for discussion and vote next week, September 4th. And that leaves us with council member reports. Councilmember Acker?
I don't know if Julie mailed it on to full council, but I've been getting a lot of feedback on the Lime Bikes, almost all very positive. The kids love them in particular to go around the island, but there were three concerns, and I sent it to Julie, and she's looking at it, and it might be something that we have to revisit when we get back into the contract performance.
Saleem? Bruce?
I will miss it, but I note that we got a town hall meeting flyer from our King County Councilmember Councilmember Claudia Balducci. She'll be here on September 15th at the community center for a town hall meeting, and encourage citizens to think about attending that if they'd like to hear from her what's up, or let her know what they think should be up.
Dave?
Just two quick things. One, a shout out to the police department, who did a fantastic job with Seafare and managing all of that as, for everybody in TV land. Mercer Island manages the event and brings together, I think, seven different law enforcement agencies, and it just runs super, super smoothly. And a big shout out to the department and all the marine patrol. The second thing is, wanted to say, great job on Let's Talk Mercer Island. If you haven't seen that and registered for that, it's really cool, and I think it represents exactly the kind of communication strategy that we had hoped for when we asked you to come join us, Julie. And it's just super clear, and like I use the comprehensive plan as an example, where it's broken into sections and super digestible. So it's just really well done. Wanted to say thanks for sort of bringing us to the vision that you told us about.
And I'd reiterate, I've had some conversations with citizens who have enjoyed it so far, so that's good. I have nothing, at least nothing that's probably worthy of another two minutes. So with that, we are adjourned, and we'll see you next month. We started a couple minutes late.